Just to bark my name once and I'll make sure you get recognized. But in any event, now, welcome to the town of Camden Select Board Meeting for April 7th, 2020. Like to call the meeting to, to begin. I would, a couple of preface notes. So we're trying very hard to make this video, virtual meeting thing work. And there are challenges to it, not least to which we mentioned last week, the delay between YouTube and our broadcast. I want to thank all the people who did heed our advice and submitted information to us before the meeting. So we get it in the packet and get it on the record. That would include, you know, the future public input and non-agenda items. If anybody has any of those, we're trying very hard to get the agenda out as early as possible with the including the packet. So you have questions or just concerns, you want to email them to us, fine, or whatever mechanism works best. The sooner the better. Practically speaking, we really need to have those, you know, by the middle of day on Tuesday of the meeting. So we can try to get them noon time on the, of the day of the meeting to get them into the record. We'll have more on this as we go forward because there is a little bit of a learning curve here. But that said, we'll begin our agenda for tonight's meeting, which is, we do have public input and non-agenda item. But I don't believe we've received any of those audre genus today. Is that correct?
Yeah.
What about, didn't, didn't we get an email from Audra saying this should be filed under?
Yes, but that's, that subject matter is later in the agenda. It was respect to the, the, the contract with the farmers market.
No, it was from Mark Haskell about.
Audrey, was your comment?
We got an email that said, I think this should be considered.
Yeah, and the first, so you're both right. The first half of the email was about budget. And then the second half of the email was about the farmer's market.
Oh, okay.
We're both right, see? Anyway, moving onward to select board reports. Who wants to start? Allison, would you like to start?
Uh, sure. I don't have a whole lot to report. I've been sick. Does not appear that I have the virus, but nobody really knows because you can't get any tests. But I'm feeling better now. The main piece of good news that I have to share is that I've seen a lot of rainbow smelt schooling in the harbor, which is kind of an unexpected one. We know we have a lot of elvers this time of year. They reopened the season. And it's been pretty, pretty quiet down there at the public landing. Marine Patrol is patrolling every night and kind of making sure that they do a good job of the social distancing. But so there are lots and lots of elvers, which are the baby American eels. And that is to be expected. But we've, I've also seen a bunch of rainbow smelt, which is another category of those anadromous fish, trying to get up to McGunta Cook. So that was fun to have documented that. And other than that, recycling unfortunately continues paused. Wish we had better news about that. I have personally started, although it pains me to say this, throwing some recyclables away. I was just allowing it all to accumulate, thinking that some great solution was going to be imminent. But it's really not. And Bob, feel free to interject here at any, any moment if you think I'm being too pessimistic. But it's not looking great for restarting recycling anytime soon. The corrugated cardboard continues and scrap metal is another thing that, that, that's still going on. And that can be really anything with a cord. So there are a lot of things that aren't ending up in the scrap metal that actually could. So hopefully we can sort of focus our efforts on that, which is something that actually generates revenue. But in terms of a lot of the, especially like the three through seven and plastics, I've been, I've been throwing those away because even if we, even the, even before this, that, that was a really tough market. So if you're going, for anybody that wants to do sort of a triage approach and keep your most valuable in hopes that it might start up again, you could go with like number one and number two plastic. But definitely the corrugated cardboard continues. And yeah, hopefully just everybody can be understanding of that. A lot of the reason for continuing the pause is that it allows us to not have all of the employees at the transfer station all the time. And so it's not just about the, the piece where we're concerned about the community or the employees actually touching the material. It's a big part of that is just to minimize the exposure in general for employees there.
Right. No, I agree, Allison. Coincidentally, I've done the same thing. I'm just trying to put aside ones and twos and everything three through seven. I, it's, your point is, it's almost to be logically, at least through this month, I'm guessing. But it's a guess for all of us. Everything's a moving target, right? At the moment, as we all know, but I, I will keep everybody posted on that one. Anything else, Allison?
No.
Taylor?
Hey, everybody. I don't have anything new to report this week, but I'll just sort of harp on the same message from last week and the same message that we keep getting from everybody else because I think it cannot be overstated to continue being diligent about following the CDC recommendations for social distancing. Can't stress how important it is enough. I think the more people continue to be diligent, the sooner the light at the end of the tunnel will approach for us. And it's upon us to do as a community, as one, to make this work. I checked out a couple of our popular hiking spots today and was happy to see that the parking lot was overflowing at Maiden's Cliff or some other places and people seem to be very respectful about social distancing. There were no large groups and I think we need to continue to see that in the long term for us to, to get through these unique times. So yeah, I can just continue keeping up, keeping up. And it's important for us to be diligent as a community. And I'm very proud and grateful for those that have been doing really a great job of following, following those orders and setting the example for, for the rest of us. Because I think that that's the best way for us to move forward. So the message is thank you and, and keep it up.
Thank you, Taylor. Mr. Ratner?
So, um, I wanted to speak, obviously there are no committee meetings going, going on right now. A lot of people are working on things, but you know, the Opera House is continuing to rebook events when it may be appropriate and working on repairs and, and promotional situations. So there's some good work going on there during this time and it allows them to do some things. But most importantly, I wanted to talk about, it came up a lot at the budget meeting last week, came up in the letter we just mentioned. And I've had other conversations with people about it. And I think I speak for all of us. We all understand that the world is changing and that our budget is a fluid thing. It's not a black and white. We have to do this. We have to spend this much money. And I think as things develop and we figure out what's going to happen, we will, we're certainly all looking towards adjusting appropriately, you know, what the town can afford, what, where we are budget wise. And I just wanted to comfort people and know that we're not sitting here going, boy, I can't get, can't wait to get back to spending tons of money. That's not the situation. We're all pretty much aware of what's going on. And at some point, I'd like Jordy and Audrey, maybe we get to the financial situation at the end, to talk about, have they seen any impact so far, or you can speak about it now, so far on, on budget matters and what's happening? How is, how has it affected the town so far, what's been going on?
Why don't we address that and we'll get to the financials at the end?
Good idea.
That'd be a good segue to that, Mark. But, but anything else from you, Mark?
No, I think it's just, you know, as I said during the last meeting, it's a good time to be calm, to be patient, to be careful and, you know, logical and, and take your time, don't make rash decisions. And, and as Taylor said, you know, really pay attention to the rules because that will make a big difference in not, not only your lives, your family lives, but everyone's lives. We're all dependent on each other at this point and we have to understand that and remember that.
Thanks, Mark. Jenna? Jenna? You're muted, Jenna. Here she is.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys. I, I, I'm here to say that I want to echo what Mark and Taylor said. And I think that they really covered all the bases, so there's no need for me to beleaguer the point. But please, please be careful, please respect the governor's recommendation, her mandate to, to the T. And if you have questions about it, certainly do research, try and call us and we'll try to get to the bottom of it. I know there's a lot that's open for interpretation in some ways, but it's really important that we take this time to really respect what the Governor Mills has put in place.
Okay. Um, I'd be remiss, but asking Vicki if you wanted to make a comment since you're here and you've done so much work with the state and, and I know it's all fluid and moving fast and there's tons of questions. But would you like to make a comment?
Sure. I just want to say thank you to you guys. The town's doing a great job and you're all working so hard. And I really, really appreciate all the, you know, all the things that you've put in place, certainly keeping everybody safe in Camden. Thank you. In terms of the state and, you know, what Jen is saying, correct? Certainly I'm getting tons of questions about can we do this? Can we do that? I think we, a lot of the things that Governor Mills has said do come down to interpretation. It's up to all of us to really almost make a moral decision, an ethical decision and kind of say, what if everybody's gathering at Maiden's Cliff? What if everybody's up on Mount Batty? What if, and you know, really kind of try to have that public safety component in mind. The other thing I just wanted to mention quick, there's understandably lots and lots of questions about the relief that will be for our small businesses and our sole proprietors. And we are getting more information on that all the time. I've got a call on Thursday with the Department of Labor Commissioner. That department has hired a bunch more people to help people with the unemployment insurance. So I know that it's frustrating. These things aren't easy to fill out, but there is aid money coming for everybody. And, you know, reach out if you have issues with it. And I think even more things will be come clear in the days to come. So that's all I basically wanted to say. Thank you for everything everybody's doing.
Thanks for joining us, Vicki. We appreciate it very much. Audra, how about yourself? Audra?
Yes, so I would, I do, we have one update. So we talked a little about how our, you know, emergency services are having the same struggles that everybody else is having in making sure that we have enough PPE. Jody was able to find some and order some. I think we have 295 masks that just came in. So that's great news for, you know, our police officers, firefighters. So, you know, it's, it's hopefully going to get us through. I don't, I don't claim to know if it's going to be sufficient, but I think it's, it's really great for the town and for our emergency services personnel.
Perfect, perfect.
And that's all I have.
That's all. Okay, just one item. Some things do continue to continue. We did have a kickoff meeting on a March 26th with Siemens. Our performance contract for obviously program to reduce. And still, this, this, uh, Public Safety, Public Works, uh, all the, I was, yeah. Add project, the library, it will be doing a walkthrough of the library. I did mention it to the chair of the.
Other people too, or is it just me?
What?
Are, you're, you're breaking up for me a lot. I'm wondering if it's just me that that's happening for.
No, I was, I was about to say the same thing. The first half of what you said was all garbled, Bob, but you're clear now. Can you try again?
Yeah, then is that better?
Yeah, it works and it working now.
Okay, sorry I'm moving my head around too much because I'm Italian. But the, what I was trying to describe was the kickoff meeting we had with Siemens on March 26th. All virtual, of course. They have gone through their results with their first walkthrough of the facilities I mentioned, which was Public Safety, Public Works, Town Hall, Opera House and Snowball Town Facilities, of course. And they have come to the conclusion that Camden is definitely a candidate for performance contracting. Exactly to what extent will reveal itself over the next phases, but it'll be no less than 15% and more logically probably closer to the 20% level of reduction of energy consumption by the town facilities. So the next step for them, and by the way, I mentioned that also we did, did discuss adding the library to the cross section here. And I did mention that in parallel to the chair of the Board of Trustees at the library. We will be trying to coordinate a, and it's a good time to do it, unfortunately, because there's nobody there to do a walkthrough of the systems there and come to the same conclusions. The next step in the process of performance contracting is to do what they call an investment grade audit, which means they've done a walkthrough and they said, yeah, you're a candidate, we can do stuff for you. But we, now we need to kind of figure out what the order of magnitude of investment would take for what kind of results in terms of energy savings. And then from that, the town will now take about a month to five weeks or so from that date. And at, at that point, the town, well, the library, anybody can look at the opportunities and make a decision which ones we think are best suited for the town. And the next step after that will be to do the actual engineering and final cost estimate. And of course, the execution of those over the remaining months. So it's moving along quite well. They've been very responsive. I'm very pleased. We'll have to take it one month at a time. And that's all I had in terms of current updates. Next on the agenda would be the approval of the board minutes from March 24th Select Board Meeting. Are there any comments on the minutes for that meeting? Mark?
I've read through them. I have no objection to them. So unless anybody else has any comments, I make a motion that we accept the minutes for the board minutes for March 24th, 2020.
Okay, I, I, in discussion, which at this point, I do have a comment on the minutes myself. And I think this follows on some previous emails in it with regard to the, and I have to find it now, the discussion about the, oh, I believe the approval of, it's worded, it says the approval of 90-day extension to the property tax due date. And I believe that terminology is incorrect. Is that correct? Did you get that, Jody?
Oh, she wasn't expecting to.
You're muted, Jody.
She knows.
Sorry, I lost the screen for a minute. I don't have good connection here in my office. Yes, so we can, it can waive the interest. I believe it's going to be through July 15th. And our assessor has made it possible for us in our software that we're doing.
Well, I'm only commenting the intro on the, on the meeting minutes says approval of 90-day extension to property tax due date. I believe that terminology is incorrect.
It should be property tax interest then.
Yeah, so we need to make that one change to the message.
Okay, so I, I amend the motion to, okay, the minutes with that one change, that the, the approval was for property tax interest. Late until July 15th.
Okay. Any other discussion on the, on the motion? Calls in favor, starting with Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna? Hello, Jenna?
You're muted, Jenna.
Well, well, Jenna's coming in. Bob says aye also. Jenna? Hello? I have a crawling, Jenna?
Okay, I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
No, it's my, it's my Luddite.
Okay, like I said, it's not a biggie, but I want to make sure we got it right.
Thanks, Bob.
Sure. I'm going between two screens here to apologize, but I have my agenda on one screen. Next would be item four, which would be approval of a renewal Vittler license and lodging licenses for two entities. One, the Camden House of Pizza at 12 Mechanic Street for a Vittler license. And secondly, would be the Belmont Inn at 6 Belmont Ave for a Vittler and lodging license. On, we'll take the first one, Camden House of Pizza. Are there any comments, questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Victor, Victor, I cannot pronounce that word, Victor, Victor, that license for Camden House of Pizza 12 Mechanic Street, so they can eat.
Second.
Cool. Any discussion? Not seeing any hands. I'll go to Taylor. Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob is aye also, five zero, five ayes as I've noticed in the meeting minutes. Secondly, we have the Belmont Inn at 6 Belmont Ave for a Vittler and lodging license.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, renew the Victor and lodging licenses for the Belmont Inn at 6 Belmont Avenue in Camden.
Second.
Okay, in discussion? Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, aye. Thank you very much. That will close item four on to item five, which is the approval of the renewal of the farmer's market license for the tannery grounds. The, the contract is, I understand that Audra is just the second of three years. Is that correct? There's one more, as it's, it's redrafted, there's one more possible year which they could apply for the same license. Is that correct, Audra?
Um, it's a year-to-year license.
Okay. Do we, if anybody have any comments on the, on the, the draft of the revocable license?
No.
I do. Because my, my question is, they've done a good job of attaching or not attaching, but of crafting certain regulations to reflect the, the main agriculture, conservation and forestry guidelines for marketing direct to consumers. In this situation, they crafted a document, which is a Camden Farmer's Market COVID-19 Response Plan. And I think it's well written, however, it's not referenced from the license.
Bob, can I say a couple of things?
Of course.
Thank you. So just so you all know, hello. I started working with Marcia from Piecemeal Farm and Mike Boehner from Bonner Farm on this. There were a couple of changes, minor changes from last year's. We changed how the vendors are defined and kind of what they sell. It didn't match up with how the farmer's market has been operating. So now we refer to something as locally grown, locally produced, value-added type products. We, that's a change we made. We also obviously changed the dates. And then I had amended the agreement to reference the emergency that the governor had declared and referenced in the agreement, in the license agreement, a copy of the, reference the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry's guidance and guidelines on doing farmer's markets during this crisis. So it is in there. I had reviewed their documents. It matches now consistent with the state's guidance on this issue. So we're, we're fine, Bob, as it is.
Mark, where are those documents referenced in the license? That's Jeremy. Jeremy, I'm sorry. Jeremy, I'm sorry. I, I just, my only point is there are, there are documents that are appended to the license and they're great, but they're not referenced from the license agreement that is being signed by Audra. And, and all I'm saying is all you need is an attachment A reference.
Okay, we could, we could amend this on the second page, bottom of page two. I said, whereas Governor Janet Mills has deemed direct-to-consumer farmer's markets to be considered essential businesses.
Yeah.
Under the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry has issued guidelines and recommendations for farmer's markets during this crisis, the town of Camden requests that the CFM, which is the farmer's market, and all its vendors adhere to these guidelines and recommendations in order to protect public health. We can just add this attachment if you'd like.
Well, I mean, if, if, I totally agree with what's been written here, but there's a Camden Farmer's Market COVID Response Plan. And it has, in my opinion, it has to be referenced someplace as attachment A or something in the license. That's all.
Okay, that's all. If you guys want to move this along, if everyone's happy with it, I can just.
It's not a question, it's not a question of content. It's just a question of format.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do that tomorrow.
All right.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't have any other comments except for, we doing, this is the place we're doing, I'm sorry, Allison.
Um, I guess I just have some general questions. I see, is it, it looks like we have Mike here on the call.
I am, yes, I'm here.
I, I'd just love to hear a little bit about what, what your thoughts are and plans are for starting. You know, what are, are you going to, is everything going to be this? Obviously not everything is going to be the same, but what, what, what are your thoughts? And when do you plan to start, I guess? And how, you know, how much is known right now and how much is still kind of up in the air for you guys?
Yep. Thanks for the question. We're, so we start on the, I believe it's the Saturday before Mother's Day. And things will not be the same. For example, there will be no non-food vendors coming to the market. So no crafts, et cetera. Everything will have to be, especially prepared foods will have to be ready to take out. They'll have to be in a container. They'll have to be prepackaged. And those are all according to the guidelines set out by the state. You know, for an example, with our farm, we aren't really going to be bringing anything to sell that isn't already sold via our digital sales outlet. So people are going to be, Camden citizens will be able to, you know, go on our website and go to our online ordering system. They'll be able to purchase, you know, salad greens, carrots, whatever they want, and we'll pack the orders. We'll show up at the market like normal. There will be senior hours starting at 9:00 AM. And then people will basically be coming to pick up orders. I will have, I'm planning to have grab and go boxes prepared. So they would basically be like prepackaged CSA shares that are just, you know, like $20 boxes for people to grab and go. There will no, not be any produce on display like normal. I mean, normally at the farmer's market, you know, there's, you know, we have all this beautiful produce and seedlings on display. At the start of the market, we're not going to be doing any of that. This is going to be very streamlined. I expect all of the vendors to basically be running some sort of variation on that theme, that they're going to be doing as much as they can to do some pre, pre-buying, pre-ordering, coming with things in accordance with the state guidelines, you know, prepackaged. There will be a little bit probably that each vendor has slight variation on what they have for sale there at the market for, you know, grab and go sales. But, you know, everybody's getting prepared for online sales and, and to abide by the, by the regulations.
And so in terms of just like the social aspect of it, of course, the farmer's market is something everybody looks forward to. We all like to hang around and just chat. Whose job do you see it as being sort of the, to try to not make it like that? I mean, I mean, maybe by the time you actually get open, things will look a lot different than they look right now. But assuming it's sort of similar with the social distancing guidelines, what are, what are your thoughts on how to? what are, what are your thoughts on how to keep people moving along and whose job will that be?
So it'll definitely, I will definitely be doing it myself for, you know, the market. I'm sure there are other vendors who will be doing it. I'm on the board of the Maine Federation of Farmer's Markets. We're gonna, there's gonna be some statewide signage that is gonna be going out to help with customer education about, you know, the COVID-19 farmer's market etiquette. You know, it is not a social event, et cetera, you know? So, you know, things like, you know, not bringing your dog, physical distancing reminders, that kind of thing. You know, and of course signage for hand washing, hand sanitizer at every vendor's booth is going to be important. I mean, I, I think that.
That's mostly like, that's, that's not something you anticipate needing a lot of support from the town?
No, I, I think we'll, we'll be able to.
I'm sure, I'm sure police would help also, but you kind of already have a plan in place and it sounds like you're connected with what everybody else is doing and.
Yeah, and we, we, you know, normally we do promotion in the form of radio ads and some print ads and these little brochures that go out, of course, to all the B and Bs and restaurants and, and what have you. We're gonna be crafting some promotional material that's gonna, you know, deal with this. There's also going to be statewide promotional material in the form of radio ads and print ads going out. So I, I'm hoping that, you know, customer education is going to be pretty widespread around farmer's markets at that point. That's my hope.
I guess, Audra, this is a, this is the place to Allison's point where do you have Mark's comment that he made regarding the farmer's market for, as a public comment?
I, I have a couple of comments. I have a couple of questions.
Well, I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to find, but while you're doing that, Mark, one second. Okay. I tried to find it in my headphone. I can't find it. Do you have it, Audra, someplace? If you could dig it up while Mark's talking, I appreciate.
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Mike, two questions. Number one, people showing up, the first, I wasn't really clear on what you said. Are people not going, do people always have to preorder before you get there? What happens to the people that show up to that first farmer's market and have, have no way of contacting any of the vendors ahead of time?
Yeah, so, you know, there are gonna be some vendors who are, you know, going to be selling things to people who show up that won't be pre-bought. I, you know, am planning on doing most of my sales pre-bought, but I will also have things for sale for people who just show up. But there's also going to be a lot of communication going on that first week with people about this email signup sheet that, you know, will be, you know, of course, hopefully, you know, COVID-19 compliant with, you know, I don't even know what that looks like as far as sanitation with pen and a paper and all that. But from what I've heard at the farmer's markets that are going on right now is that there, there is a fair amount of this dialogue happening. I expect that when our market starts in May, you know, there'll be a fair amount of that dialogue happening and, and hopefully things will go smoothly.
Okay, I have a second question. In the contract that I'm looking at that's on our packet, it reads pretty much identical to what it was last year. Especially item number 12, it says licensee shall work with all of the Camden Farmer's Market participating farmers to provide for the use of SNAP EBT cards where possible this year. And the licensee shall work to require that all farmers accept SNAP EBT cards in subsequent years. Now, that's the wording, I believe, that was in last year's contract. Where are we with having all, all the vendors being able to accept those cards? Because I have a sneaking suspicion that those cards are going to be very important this year for a lot of people.
So we are in the queue for getting the free machine for EBT. There are five vendors at the market that accept SNAP EBT. That's the last time I checked. It was five. It's a work in progress. Unfortunately, right now SNAP EBT, because it works for the most part on a token system, there's been a lot of learning as you go with the COVID-19 and the tokens, tokens having to be quarantined. And also the requirement has been at most of the markets that has the collect SNAP as a market-wide program. There's a, either paid staff or a volunteer at a booth that is doing this, you know, card reading and token exchange. And it's been a complicated issue, as one can imagine, for the past three to four weeks. But we, you know, Camden is in the process. There are some vendors that take SNAP right now that have the readers. That's what I've got.
Yeah, how, how difficult is it for individual farmers to get, to get the reader?
You know, the most difficult thing is just waiting. I mean, I have been waiting for my SNAP reader for 12 months, about a year, I think. And that's not only for the farmer's market, that's also for my farm stand.
Okay.
And that, you know, it's partially because I'm, I'm using grant, federal grant money to get this. I think if I would have just gone out and bought the machine, I'd be up and running sooner.
Okay, okay. I just, just curious because it was in the contract. As you go back and speak to anybody.
Thanks, Mark.
It'd be a good thing. Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark. Audra, why don't you? Anybody else have a comment before I have Audra address the public input?
Bob, this is Jeremy. I just wanted to comment on that.
Yeah.
Mark, thanks for bringing that up. I will say that Marcia and Mike had reached out to me, oh, about a month and a half ago, that they were working diligently to try to get a farmer's market SNAP EBT card system set up. And that was in the works. And that's why I did not change the language yet because it hadn't been finalized yet. So they are working on it. So thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any other comments before we read that public comment? Audrey, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to skip to the part that's relevant to this agenda item. It says, this is from Mark Haskell. It says, tonight, the select board is going to review the farmer's market. I would like to start by saying I support having the farmer's market in town, but I do not approve of them using town property and facilities for free. It is a slap in the face to every business in this town to let them freeload off to taxpayers. I believe most of the businesses that participate are from out of town. They're good people and good businesses and part of doing business anywhere is paying for the cost of doing business. Ask any other business in town if you'd like to operate rent and tax free. Our library has several events each year. They charge hundreds of dollars to the vendors for each event. That goes to the cost of running and maintaining the library. The farmer's market should be paying to use town property. Under the current agreement, they don't pay enough to even mow the grass once during the season. I for one am tired of Camden giving, Camden giving so much free stuff to the world. Please pass this on to the select board.
Thank you, Audra. Any comments from the select board? Well, actually, one question, Audra, as a backdrop here, because I'm not, I don't pretend to be an expert. Do we have other operations in the town that we charge for using the public landing or things like that?
We have a license with Harbor Dogs and they pay for their spot on the public landing. You know, another agreement that we're going to be looking at tonight is side country sports. And they pay to be in the, that building at the Snow Bowl and, and run a branch of their business out of there. I'm actually going to unmute Beth in case she can remember anybody, anybody that I'm missing.
License for her dogs. And they pay for some public.
Does somebody move on?
Other. They pay to be in.
Who's speaking?
Somebody's trying to move on and they need to turn it off.
Actually, I'm going to unmute that.
It's not me.
Who was speaking? Someone's YouTube is on.
Yes, it's YouTube.
Oh. Beth, do you have a comment?
I just, I, I know that we are also going to be charging field users at the Snow Bowl to reserve their, their time on the field. But other than that, I, I can't remember any other using town property and not paying for it.
And, and Michael, I know you're still on there. This is not about, you know, trying to do anything that's going to put the farmer's market in jeopardy. It's about being, we need to be, we need to be consistent across the board in what we do or we don't do. Audra.
Um, another, the rowing club is another entity that they don't pay a lease to, to use the space that they have at Barrett's Cove.
Mark.
My question would be, one for Mike and then maybe for Audra, is are you aware of fees that other towns charge for? I don't think anybody here has an expertise on what that fee might be and what's fair. Mike, I'm interested if you're aware of fees that other towns charge. And Audra, maybe you could task somebody to find out what, what is a fair market price for what other towns charge for access to their property for farmer's markets? If, if they do, you know, I believe there are some, I'd asked about this in the past. And I believe that there are some that don't charge for this because it's a, a unique service that really does help the community.
Mike, do you want to comment on this area? Because I'd like to hear from you in terms of your, you know, what you're hearing here. And because you're a big part of us and please, please chime in now.
Uh, yeah. As far as town property, municipal property, yes, there's everything from whatever the Portland Farmer's Market pays to be in the park there. Portland, which I think is, is quite substantial.
It is.
To, you know, a fair amount of the farmer's markets in the state that are on some sort of town property pay, you know, everything from a couple thousand bucks to nothing. So it varies. You know, a lot of it depends on where, you know, how many vendors, how big is the farmer's market? Is the farmer's market reasonably capable of paying? Certainly in the case of Camden, we are. How much, total, you know, totally up for negotiations? You know, the, the market is not opposed to paying the lease by any means. I'm, I'm not, you know, going to get more specific than that because I can't speak for the market.
Yeah.
Just off the cuff about that, but absolutely.
Michael, I wouldn't comment on that more than that either if I was you. It seems to me that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm feeling there's a there are other entities using town property that are paying some amounts of money for, and again, the amount of money is not the question. It's just the principle. Perhaps the, what we could do is, you know, we could talk to approving this agreement and authorize Audra and Michael to sit down and talk about what's a reasonable fee to pay an annual basis that one doesn't burden the, the, the farmer's market, but at the same time allows us to, you know, have a face to the public, which I think we have to be consistent on. Comments? Allison.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Allison was first.
So, um, I mean, one thing that I think is important to keep in mind with the farmer's market is that it's, they're not there all the time and they current, the, the fact, when they are there, it is not at this moment keeping us from doing anything else. It's not like, like the amphitheater where, or the opera house where it's like bookings. And okay, so we've reserved it for the farmer's market. So that means we're going to lose revenue from some other entity that now can't book it. It's the farmer's market, it's just, they're just not keeping us from doing
True.
other things with it. We, we, we could be, and, you know, as long as that's not part of the agreement, that they have some, you know, exclusive use of that space and that we couldn't have say, okay, well, on Tuesdays, we're going to start letting food trucks come in or something like that. So I, I don't feel the need to charge for it at this point. Although I think it would be nice if we could come up with something where, you know, I don't know if somebody can, can mow or, you know, do some kind of bartering or more of the, it'll be, you know, it'd be nice if maybe they came up with some kind of idea of doing some small thing in lieu of payment, but.
Good, good point, Allison. Taylor was, one second, Jenna. Taylor was next.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I was just going to say that, yeah, I agree that the, the farmer's market is, is, if anything, a valuable resource for the community. However, I do sympathize with the fact that, you know, that it is a, it is a town space being used for profit. And I, you know, I do think that it's reasonable particularly for that. It's typical in other municipalities that there's some sort of fair market value annual fee that's paid. I like Bob's idea of, of approving this with the exception that Audra would sit down with Michael and they would agree upon a reasonable fair market value of an annual fee. And I don't think it needs to be exorbitant. I agree that it's a principle more than anything.
Jenna.
I just want actually to fully second what Allison said. I feel like the market brings so much to the community. There's not a competition for the space. I, the one thing that I would say is I've heard, I know that it's a jured market and Mike can, can speak to that. I don't know that it's necessary, but I would think that perhaps maybe some Camden businesses or farmers that are supposed to might be, might be, sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback from somewhere, might be given at least a little bit of an opportunity to, to get in, maybe, I don't want to say preferential treatment, but kind of, that if you're a Camden resident, a Camden farmer, that you might get a consideration to participate. And that's, I just, I think that having it in town and at, at the tannery or at any, really any one of our public spaces is so valuable. I can't imagine charging them a fee. I do like the idea of some kind of maintenance if there, if that would be permissible and helpful.
Mark, do you have any comments?
I do. I, I agree with all. I think that, you know, it's, it's, there's, there should be a common ground. Maybe, you know, the farmer's market, we would be at a great loss without it. It's, it's really important. It's something my family uses every week. I'd like to see it expand and be fuller and bigger and larger. But I also understand the nature of, you know, some of the people that are hurting in this town and looking for some help. But maybe it's a token fee. Maybe it's, it's something, considering what Allison said, which is a great point, that they're there for, you know, four hours or, or, you know, three hours on, on a Saturday morning and, you know, a few hours on Wednesday and that's it. And that space is not used any other time. It's a great use. It, it actually is an improvement to the town. So maybe it's a token fee. Maybe it's a hundred dollars. Maybe it's, you know, I don't know what it is. But that's why I suggested, let's find out what other towns do. Do they charge? Do they not? You know, I don't think we should make a decision on our own. We should find out what's going on out there.
Well, that's why, yeah, and I agree. And that's why I had suggested that Michael and and Audra could sit down and I, my mind, I call it a stipend for maintenance. Just call it a stipend for maintenance. And we, it may be zero to a hundred dollars or whatever you decide, but leave the authority to them to do it. At least we're addressing it. I don't, I have to agree. I don't think it should be a chunk of change because I don't want to burden the, the farmer's market because to the point of, yeah, they don't, don't use all the time. So the stipend should be really low. But I think Michael and Audra come up with a small number that won't flobber any vendor and, and, and put the thing out and make everybody, you know, not want to come here. Audra?
Um, I would just like to advocate once again to, for the select board to consider some sort of policy for the lease around public spaces. Because this has come up a number of times across a number of different public open spaces. And it would just be really helpful for me and the staff if we had some sort of. And it would just be really helpful for me and the staff if we had some sort of policy or framework to work from.
Makes a lot of sense, Audra. But, um, well, we, we need to proceed on this one right now and we don't have the policy written. Um, and we, I do agree, we do need to write something like that. So we could be, but consistency is it. I think we need to be consistent. Alison? Alison?
Yep, sorry, I'm, I'm muting myself. Um, I I'm not quite understanding what you mean by policy because it seems like, I mean, it, it sounds good to say that we should be consistent, but in reality, the use of public space is something that we decide on all the time. And that's one of the actual reasons for a select board is that it allows us just to use what we consider to be our best judgment and a, you know, our best analysis of what we think the community wants. So, um, do you, are you meaning like a policy, like we are gonna, there will be no free use of town property or, you know, everybody pays something or I don't know if there's, it's, I'm having a hard time seeing a good.
That's, that's your responsibility to come up with what you want to be in it. But I guess that we've had this conversation probably four times now since I've been here. And, um, I'm not saying, like, if all of you are perfectly satisfied with treating it on a case by case basis, that's your, that's your prerogative as a select board, but I would just suggest that this has come up enough and there's enough, uh, yes.
I mean, I just, I just think it will always come up and that different, different spaces have a different value and depending on what somebody wants to do, it's very often going to be a judgment call whether there should be a monetary value with that or not. I mean, maybe it should, the policy should just be that, you know, the select word actually weighs in every time rather than.
I think it all is.
I agree. I, the action, what a request of my order was to take a look at the policy. We're not gonna, we're not gonna close on that policy tonight. We could certainly can discuss it at some point in time. But right now, uh, you can, everything from the policy from case by case to there has to be a fee of, of, of any use of, of a public space. Um, but right now, we gotta address this contract. And the question is, what do we want to do with this contract? Getting it from accepted as is, or my alternative was suggested was let Audra and Michael decide what's reasonable and uh, as a stipend for maintenance called it reflective of how much they use it, don't use it twice a week, I believe is this, that's it. Um, and it, I mean, if they come up with a dollar, two dollars, that's what it costs for. Um, but at least we, at least we address it.
So you want to delay voting on it?
No, no, no. What I said was we would approve this contract and then give Audra the authority to discuss it with this issue with Michael and, and come to some conclusion of what might be uh, considered reasonable, not burdening the farmer's market at the same time. Um, being a little more consistent with other places we do charge for utilization of public space.
I think that's kind of skirting our responsibility to come up with um, a reasonable number and that just telling Audra to come up with something that they both agree on seems a little bit, I, I would feel awkward in that position. I'm fine with approving it tonight as is.
Okay, Taylor?
Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, Taylor? Unmute.
How's that? Sorry about that, guys. Um, yeah, I, I, I agree that it would, it would be better to make a, a, a decision about that if we know exactly what, um, other places charge of us to see if we want to make. I know Bangor, I just saw Bangor charges three hundred for the year. Um, um, so I'm just gonna make a motion, um, that we approve the, um, contract tonight, um, with a annual fee of fifty dollars.
As a, so stipend for maintenance, kind of a description, whatever they want to call it. Well, you had your hand up again.
I was trying to second them.
You gotta, you gotta go like this.
Yeah, I keep getting, I've.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, are there any more discussion on the matter? Not seeing, uh, not seeing any hands or voices. I will go for a vote from Taylor. Jeremy, Jeremy?
One question, you got to, um, you, someone's gotta add those attachments to this motion.
What? Oh.
The attachment to the motion?
Taylor, Jer- Jeremy's point is that the, the two documents, which we'll, we'll, let's call them attachment A, they, they can all be attachment A, would be, uh, reflected in the license agreement as one change. And the second change would be to propose a fifty dollar annual fee for a stipend for maintenance.
Okay, um, so I move that we accept the farmer's market contract um, with a change of an annual fee of fifty dollars and that we include attachment A as discussed.
Alison?
Why does, why does this? Why do the state guidelines or which these two documents that main, I recall for conservation forestry document you want part, as part of the motion?
If, we made a comment about this, there's not so much the main, that, that, it's the second document, which is the agreement for the Camden Snow Bowl for, I'm sorry, it's the second document, which is the, uh, procedure that they've written that is the, I mean, get back to it, hold on a second. The first document, the first, the, the point is, there's two documents here that reflect their actions toward COVID and it's not referenced into the license agreement. So therefore you could just throw them away tomorrow. The second.
Those are just guidelines that can change at any point. I don't think it makes sense to have that as part of the.
Um, that's, if that's what, I, I would disagree, but if you have, um, if they've spent time going back and forth negotiating the language in the Camden Farmer's Market COVID Response Plan updated April seventh, which is today, and I think it should be referenced from a document, otherwise they don't have to comply with anything.
I mean, to me, the, we're entering into an agreement with the farmer's market in large part because we trust them to be a, an upstanding organization with the community's best interest in mind. So I, I don't, I don't think we should be looking at this snapshot in time and saying they need to do, you know, in, in August, it's essential that they be following exactly what it says in this document that they came up with on April seventh. I would have, I would expect that they would be following along with all of the changing state guidelines and that they, that document would be a, a living document that would be updated as needed. I just don't see why it needs, I think it was important, nice background information for us. I, I enjoyed seeing it in there to see, okay, well, they've done a lot of thinking about this. This is what the state's saying. This is what the farmer's market is saying. And it made me feel good about signing the contract, but I don't need to sign off on.
Uh, the only, the only reason I would mention that is because we, in our, in our license, we have the right to ask a vendor to move off the site if we want to. And I think this would be one of the reasons if we saw a vendor was not following the protocol that they've established, we can have the right to move them off the site. Now, um, that's just my, that's, that's why I think it's important. But Taylor, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was, I, I see what Alison's, I see what you're both getting to. And I guess in terms of, uh, practicality, it seems to me that with the governor's orders that will obviously be rescinded at some point in time, but with the governor's orders, whether we put it in our contract or not, they, vendors still need to follow them. So, uh, the way our other governor's orders, she gives agents and, uh, licensors, i.e. like a select board, the power to, um, en- enforce those guidelines. I would, it seems to me that I don't expect this to happen if there was an issue with a vendor or someone at the farmer's market not abiding by the governor's mandates, that we would have recourse to take care of that, whether it's in our contract not, or not.
Jeremy, Jeremy, you negotiated this back and forth. What do you think? Jeremy?
I'm mute my, hold on.
Okay, sure.
Am I there? Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so just to be honest, so I looked at this, I said, yeah, I, I saw that the governor included these as essential services, essential businesses, hugely important. Um, and so I, I included this, um, in the license agreement. I sent it over to Mike and to, uh, Marcia. Um, they appreciated it. They came up with a, a follow-up document, which was their document, which frankly had some, um, it said, if possible and when possible, farmers and the market would have sanitizer and hand washing facilities available. I went back to them and I said, uh, honestly, that, that in my mind doesn't meet the governor's intent. Um, and so they willingly and happily changed it and they said, good catch, um, that they will provide hand sanitizer and washing, um, facilities like that. Um, we, what I referenced was the, the agriculture, conservation and forestry's guidance. That guidance will change. Um, I think the language that we have, um, if the guidance changes, um, it will change and our, the way it's written, um, will change with it. So I, I think, um, you know, I, I think it's good to have it as part of the, as part of the document. Um, but that's just me. Um, I'm certain most, if not all farmers will, um, adhere to all of these requirements. But, you know, some of this is also about the public and the public has some responsibilities in those farmer's market guidelines as well. Um, and so, you know, I think it's important. I think it's a, um, it's a public policy thing. It's a public health thing and, and I don't know why you wouldn't include it, but, um, it does, like Bob says, it, it does give us that ability to quickly remove someone from the market if they're not complying with it. And God, I hope that never happens, but, um,
It won't.
You know, that is what it is.
I mean, why aren't we for all of our vitler licenses?
Yeah, I, I kind of, I, I think I see, uh,
Well, yeah, I, I.
I wonder if it's redundant.
I hear you.
Right.
It's a good question and maybe we should.
You know, why does the state allow people to walk in? You know, you could have takeout dent, takeout restaurant. Um, but you could have a hundred people in and out of that one space, um, picking up their food in the course of an hour. Um, they still allow that. Um, to me, that's not safe necessarily and compliant with this whole standards, but I don't know, you know, this, I have not seen the state come out with a best management guidance for restaurants. Um, I have not seen that document.
Yeah, not yet, not yet. That's true. There, there, you really have, there's a couple of alternatives here. We can attach it or reference it. Uh, and if we don't feel comfortable with that, then I would just turn to Michael and say, make, make sure this is posted a- at the, uh, at the, at the farmer's market for all to see. Uh, you know, the public and everybody else to see. Um, and each, uh, participant, um, in the farmer's market gets a copy of whatever regulation they want to impose. Just want some, some force that says that they're, they're knowledgeable of the requirements and, and the public is knowledgeable at the same time.
And I did ask in the follow-up, um, with them that, just that, Bob, that each of the vendors gets provided with a copy of both the state's guidance as well as the farmer market themselves, their own guidance.
Yeah, I, I think a little bit of it is to, to my mind, to the public benefit, it doesn't have to be attached to the license. Oh, my God, please, I hope I someday quickly, literally, we don't have to address this, but I, I think that to the public's benefit, it should be posted at the, because it does involve the public, you know, at, and, at the, at, at the site, at the, at the tannery, when the farmer's market's operating. That could be easily done, I believe. And, uh, at the same time, as long as every vendor has that, and we do have the same cloud, honestly.
Bob, and I'm sorry for bringing this back up as, as the motion was happening. You guys brought it up earlier in the conversation and I was just tying it back in. That's the only reason I did that.
No, don't apologize. I think it's a good discussion. So, um, I, I think we could qualify this, uh, for, we craft a motion any way we desire. Uh, Taylor?
Yeah, I'm just, um, I'm gonna restate the motion without the attachments unless, I'm curious what Audra thinks. I really feel like, I think Alison is on to something I like. I feel like it's unnecessary to, to reference those guidelines in the contract because they're law. So whether we put it in our contract or not, we shouldn't have an effect on how we can enforce it. Uh, unless I'm missing something.
And the reason, the reason to your point though, uh, to, there is a law, but everybody's interpretation of it is a little bit different to Jeremy's point he just made. The interpretation that he went back and forth with the farmer's market group was modify the language to interpret the regulations and law more appropriately because he, remember the law, it's not really a law, it's guidelines.
So Jeremy, just to be clear then, it, it, with the people that you've spoken with at the farmer's market, would they be expecting this to be part of the contract? And that this is something that they've essentially already verbally agreed to be, um, going along with?
Um, as, I mean, Mike, Mike, you know, on this conversation and Mike is, I think, well-versed on this and the farmer's market is fully intending to, um, have their vendors comply with these requirements. I mean, their, Mark is, I mean, Mike is a, um, you know, he's one of the leaders in the state farmer's market movement. So, um, I'm confident that they're, they're gonna comply with it. Again, there is one paragraph that mentions this. If you want to just leave the attachment out, leave it out. That paragraph still is in the agreement.
Yeah, all right. So I think we've talked about this enough. Um, I move that, um, we approve this contract of the farmer's market with an annual fee of fifty dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? Vote, vote for a vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Alison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, aye. Five ayes and two tees. Anyway, onward and upward. Thank you, Michael. Thank you very much and have a great year. I hope it'll be wide open in a few months for you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Take care.
You, take care.
Yeah, definitely. Onto item six, which is the approval agreement with side country sports in the Camden Snow Bowl, which is, I believe is a one-year agreement commencing in, uh, April first of, uh, this year and through March thirty-first of next year. With an option for one more year. Mark?
Um, I read through the agreement and in part two, um, the last sentence reads a little awkward to me. It said, side country sports should have the option to renew for a consecutive terms running from April, you know, first two thousand twenty-one through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
There's a typo there.
It's a little, that last sentence is a little awkward and I think needs to be cleaned up just a touch and made a little clearer.
Yeah.
What it's doing.
Okay. Yeah, you're, I think that the, uh, terms with the S is incorrect. It should just be one consecutive term. There's only one more consecutive term in the agreement as I, as I read it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeremy, does that make sense to you?
Makes sense to me, but I'm gonna throw this over to Beth because I think it's more her agreement.
Oh, sorry.
Right, Beth?
This makes sense to you?
Yes, this makes sense. Yeah, I'll make those changes on the document.
All right. Okay, cool. Um.
Other than that, I'm totally in support of it.
Any other comments before we go to motion?
I have a, there was a request that was made, um, by side country sports. So given, given that they can't currently operate, uh, they're, they've been closed down, um, they would, they'd like to request that rent is waived for the months when they're closed down. And that's pretty consistent with what a lot of other landlords are doing, you know, across the mid-coast for businesses and that are impacted.
In this, it commences in, well, it already commenced actually in March, right? Uh, for two thousand.
I'm just sort of bringing it up as a, yeah.
Thousand dollars a month, is that it? I believe. Twelve thousand a year?
Yes, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so it would be, uh, uh, obviously March and April are already shut down. So there's two months there already and there's bound to be more, of course. Um, yeah, I, it's, can't do business. It's kind of hard to pay a fee.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of granting that request. I am as well.
Okay, um, I guess we, that we just have to modify the agreement to put that language, fix the typo that Mark mentioned and to, uh, as, I'm curious, fix the, the, the terminology in paragraph two and to add something that says that they're not allowed to operate because of state mandate or whatever it is, um, that they don't have to pay the one thousand dollars a month. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, um, that we approve the contract with the, uh, with those provisions.
Second.
Okay, and for the discussion. Um, Taylor, vote.
Aye.
Alison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob also. So we're cool on that one. Audrey will have to make some word crafting. I'm sure you and Jeremy or you and Beth can figure it out. Draw on characters, please. All right, good. Um, then on to item seven, which is, let me just get to it here. Hold on a second, because I can't do my usually memory speech about public hearings because we don't have the same circumstances, but hold on. Okay, item seven is a public hearing regarding the Camden zoning ordinance amendment for the June town meeting. It specifically amend Article Five Administration Section Two permits required and Article 11 Historic Resources Committee Section Three duties demolition review of the Camden zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment to Article Five would, among other things, provide for a review process and a delay period, which could be waived to obtain a permit to demolish structures located within Camden's three historic overlay districts or within a historic, within a, should be an historic district that is under final review by the National Park Service and for properties designated as national historic landmarks. The amendment to Article 12, 13, excuse me, amendment to Article 13 would give members of the Historic Resources Committee the authority to participate in an advisory role to the code enforcement officer in the review of demolition permit applications per Article Five, the zoning amendments. Included in our package tonight are, um, normally we would read, I would recite the, uh, public hearing process and and I, uh, but I would need to amend that somewhat because of the situation we're in right now. And I said definitely, uh, as from the public input, we have in fact received and in, in the record have, I believe it's seven total, uh, of, of documents that have been sent and it have to all be in support of this amendment, um, from Chris Fazzle, Jennifer, Jennifer Healy, Dennis and Judy McGurk, Mike Scaling, DeeDee Parker, Pat Scaling and Eileen Curtis Kleiman. Uh, they are matter of public record. And I guess, uh, uh, to, to our procedure as we go forward, I don't, I'm hoping that we won't commit a lot more public hearings between now and the end of this thing, but, um, this is the way it should work where we get some, uh, pre, some input from the public so we can post it to the public, record it and have it on the record. We don't always have that advantage and I thank them for doing that. Um, with that, I will revert to the select board for discussion on this amendment. Mark?
Mark, you want? And what I wanted to add to that is that there are no negative, uh, comments or letters addressed to us. Everything, all, all were positive.
I believe, I believe I said that.
And I didn't, I didn't hear the negative, that there are no negatives. Um, and in that regard, I'd like to, uh, uh, make a, uh, make a proposal that we, uh, um, we move the, uh, approve the, the Camden's ordinance amendment to move it to the June town meeting, which is to amend Article Five Administration Section Two permits required in Article 11 Historic Resources Committee Section Three duties demolition review of the Camden zoning ordinance.
Second. Discussion. Um, again, I want to, um, I think I made my comments last time. I'm not going to make them again. This is for me a step one in a long, long journey, longer journey, more productive one. And I, I hope we will continue on the path to, uh, make, uh, keeping our town, um, uh, maintaining its historic look, feel, et cetera. And we will continue on that pace, but I also congratulate the, the members of the Historic Resource Commission for working so hard and look forward to working with them more in the future. With that, uh, and now you don't hear, Jenna, did you have a comment?
I just think this is great and that it's a great first step and it's long overdue. The historic community, uh, character of our community is to me as important as the harbor and the mountains. And I'm just thrilled to see this moving forward.
With that, vote for a vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Uh, aye, and I'd like to thank Jeremy and the planning board as well for the hard work they put into this.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, aye. Five ayes again. Onward. And again, thank you. I'm going to close the public session, revert back to our, our agenda. And basically the next item was to discuss setting a date for the select board approval of the FY21 budget. Um, as we all know, um, this is a backdrop, the budgets, uh, committee is still in, in, in the process of, um, of, uh, working through that, that process. Number two, we have quite a bit of flexibility, uh, in terms of our schedule, more than I, I originally thought, at least because of the ability to, I understand it from Bill Kelly, we can submit an addendum to the town report if we so desire, uh, with a seven-day notice to the public for whenever the town meeting is scheduled for. And we don't know currently is scheduled for June, but, um, we'll see where that goes as, as the weeks move out. So what I might suggest here is we can set a tentative date, um, uh, for the approval and, and then let's see how the process moves forward. We probably have the ability to go out as, in the order, in, into May with this and including going to the select board meeting or on or about May 5th if we so desire, which I believe is the first select board meeting for May. Um, uh, but again, it's something special. We can set any date we want. I just, I just suggested whatever we set, be set at a tentative basis, uh, because stuff is moving so dynamically and so quickly. Other comments?
Uh, just, just a question, um, because my memory is not surfing any well. Do we usually, uh, are we, have we historically been able to get this done in a single evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's a long evening sometimes, but yes, it is. It's, it's, it's heavy. Uh, we don't, we, we can always do a special select board meeting, which I'm sure you would all love to do. Um, but I think we could, for now, we should contemplate doing it around, uh, or on a select board meeting date. Um, and again, tentatively to make sure we don't, we could always bring it up earlier too, if we want to. Allison?
Um, I think that our ability to get it done in a single night has, oh, is dependent entirely on how much we've talked about it before. Um, and since as a group, we've done a lot of talking about the capital planning stuff, but I mean, we should remember this is our, like, our most important document. Everything the town does sort of revolves around this. So I tend to think that trying to do it all in one evening of a select board meeting that we have other things to do also is overly ambitious.
Okay. Okay. No, I, I would agree with you, Allison. I, I, I was just trying to, what I'm really trying to focus on is, um, is, is a time frame to do whatever we want to do, including if it's over two nights or two, that's fine. I totally agree. I would rather spend more time on it and less time on it, especially given the situation we're in right now. Um, I, I have to admit that I'm a, a bit jaundiced by, uh, the, my thinking that the more time we can squeeze out of this, the more knowledgeable we're going to be in terms of where we may be headed with this virus issue. Um, I, I'm, maybe I'm being overly optimistic and I'm not suggesting this has anything to do with a, a, a town meeting day or, 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 uh, et cetera. That decision will come also, but I have no problem with doing it in a couple of nights. But I'm just saying, I believe we can probably schedule something in the first week or two of May and still be able to accomplish, um, the objectives to get it to, uh, a town meeting, even if we, if we were so lucky to have it in June.
But we're not going to hide, didn't the state just?
Say again?
The governor, yeah. And say that they're not looking at June anymore, that we're, they're at least delaying it until, um, the middle of July.
Delaying?
Yeah, July 14th.
Delay?
Yeah, and at Mills. I only know this because Audra told me, so I'm not, um, but maybe Audra should jump in.
Audra.
So I, I watch.
Audra?
So yeah, Jenna and I were actually talking about this today, but we just found out today that the governor said she didn't give an exact date for when the elections are going to be, but she definitely said that they're not occurring in June. And really what flows from the state impacts us as well, because we are not going to hold local elections if the state isn't holding state elections.
Well, that's good input. That, that feeds more of the fact that we don't need to rush the schedule at this point. Um, uh, we could, uh, think, talk about it again on the 21st and on May 5th and decide when we want to actually schedule the data dates to review the budget. Taylor?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Um, you know, I think, uh, the, the longer we, I guess, delay and see how this all unfolds, the better informed we'll be. Um,
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor of not setting it now and sort of waiting to see what happens.
Yeah, you know, I, I would have to agree with that. Uh, it's just so much is so fluid. Look what you're discussing just happened today. One second, Allison and Mark. Um, I, I, I think that's a, a smart thought process and also, um, you know, this, remember I failed to mention, we also have the option of, uh, and we would in that situation of continuing with the existing budget beyond June 30th. Correct, Audra?
Yes.
To Allison was firsthand up.
Um, yeah, I guess just, um, in terms of delaying it, it would be great for me to be able to see maybe from, um, town staff a, um, like a, a tentative proposed schedule or maybe a couple of them. So we could say, okay, well, if we, if it ends up being June, I mean, July 14th, that the state election is going to be, then we would propose to do the, you know, the open floor portion of it the next day or the following Saturday or whatever. And this is what it would do to all of our, um, deadlines. Just to kind of wrap our heads around it. And I know, I mean, some people have been working on the, like, department heads, I think have been working on their contributions for the, um, annual reports. Select board, we haven't even talked to my, best of my knowledge about a, a lot of those things.
Right.
Um, but just to kind of have a, a list of all the different, you know, end of normal, end of year responsibilities and then any additional ones we might not be thinking of and deadlines.
Yes. Is your question limited to, or not, to the town report and that schedule in the name? Or are you talking to, uh, to Jody and Audra about, uh, carrying on the existing budget past June 30th? I didn't quite.
Existing budget stuff is a, not really what I'm talking about. More just, I mean, unless that becomes
No, no, I, I
We run, unless that's, does need to be part of it, but more just in terms of printing and deadlines and
Right.
Um, some people are asking if they can have, um, because of what happened today with the governor, that that will change the deadline for getting signatures in, um, to get on the ballots. I don't know if those are, you know, things that we have control over or don't have control over. Um, it's, you know, every year, even in normal years, it's always a little bit complicated and things catch us off guard when it's, you know, time for the select board to submit our report to Janice so that it can go in the annual report. Just, I just need a, a primer again for this year and maybe some staff.
Sure.
You know, an annotated whatever. I don't know.
Mark, you had your hand up earlier.
Um, yes, I, I think we should table setting a, a, a set date for it because there's too much changing right now. I think we should just have the same discussion at the next meeting to see what we've learned since then and what's happened.
Yeah, I would agree with you. It's just fluid as heck. And I, in, in fairness to the state, they, um, I, I can see again, and I did discuss this with Vicky Shonon on board right now, but, um, that the state has not been able to think through all the elements to Allison's point, a good one. Um, um, you know, what do people do about signatures? They really haven't crossed that kind of detail. That's very normal. Um, I, I doubt we have an answer to that question or at this moment. Um, as far as, you know, the nomination papers being due by ti- typically this Friday at a certain hour, I, you know, I, it, it's, if we, if you create a moving target, that's one problem. On the other hand, is it fair to? Probably. Um, it's, it's an, I think it's an open question. Um, and we, I don't know how we resolve that one unless the town maintains what we know and, and stay with it or come up with an alternate date. Uh, we don't have that right now. But to the point of the budget, I agree, that doesn't have to be decided right now.
I think, given this, you know, we just found this out today a few hours ago. Um, it would be great if we could sort of go back and, you know, I'm happy to do a timeline based on, like, theoretically, there's an election on the 14th, just to give us something to work towards. Because I, I mean, we've got so much that we're, you know, this is the time of year where we're pretty, we're, we're trying to wrap up the budget. We're trying to wrap up everybody's, you know, portion of the town reports. We're trying to get ready for election.
Yep.
So, you know, we're like in the middle of having all of that prepared. So it would be really nice just to get to a point where we are almost done and we just need to have that certain date so that we can, you know, just push everything forward to
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I think it's going to be fluid. Uh, they, who knows? It may go beyond July 14th or, who knows? We don't know.
But a, a lot of it, we have to do it no matter what. So I want to be cautious about, it's always easier to say like, oh, well, here's our perfect excuse to just kick the can down the road a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Well, we, a lot, like Audra said, a lot of momentum. How much is really going to change for us is, you know, our, we might, we might as well get done what needs to be done. Um, and a lot of that won't really, but I mean, how much of a budget really is going to change?
Well, I, I think across the board, Allison, I think you're right. We, we've been proceeding up to this moment with a public hearing about an ordinance, assuming that the thing will be printed, you know, and ready for June. Um, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't stay on that schedule and just decide later when that actual voting day or town meeting day will be. Um, otherwise we're going to start chasing dates. Example.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we should try to choose when our town meeting day is going to be. Not saying that. I'm just saying, let's be careful about saying, let's not even talk about when we're going to talk about the budget until two weeks from now. I, I, I think we should, and any, you know, some other associated things like, you know, choosing the, the picture that goes on the front of the report and choosing who it's going to be dedicated to and you know, all those little things that, you know, I
Yeah.
Then, I mean, having the budget ready to go, just get the, get some of that stuff done and then decide later when we actually are going to vote on it, when, you know, when the townspeople are going to vote on it. That's the part we can't control, but most of the other stuff, we should just probably build on momentum, get it done.
I was trying, I was trying to reinforce exactly what you just said. And my point is, I think that we have been planning to move toward, uh, June thing, uh, we, we shouldn't stop that. Um, to get it all done and behind us. And then whenever the, the dates get settled for the actual, we have it all behind us and scheduled, ready to go. Um, and that's what we did tonight. And I think we should continue doing that with all the elements, but you, you know, I, I, I agree with you, Allison. I agree with you completely. I'm not disagreeing. I think we just playing with semantics. Taylor has his end up.
Um, yeah, on the, on the budget, I guess this is kind of a question for Audra too, because she has her finger on the pulse of the department heads. But my, I guess my concern and my thought on, um, on waiting, I, I suppose as long as is practical is that gives them an opportunity to know if they feel like they need to make changes to their budget based on what's happening. Um, and I, I just wonder if it's appropriate to let that play out of it so that if department heads feel like they do need to make changes to their budget, that happens before we talk about it. I, I'm just wondering if that is an issue that you see coming up, Audra?
I mean, I, I would really like to avoid that. Like, I, I'm not sure if any of you saw the last budget committee meeting, but you know, I know it's a scary uncertain time and I know people are very stressed out about personal finances, but really, I mean, we can make, we can make some adjustments if everybody's goal is to sort of get spending down to, you know, to a net increase of zero. We can do that without fundamentally going angle departmental budget and opening it up and making drastic changes at this point. And I'd really like to advocate for that approach because I feel like, you know, there's, you know, we've already sort of talked about some of the, the bigger, broader concepts. Um, you know, going into
Audrey, you're breaking
Next financial year.
Audrey, you're
Yeah, it's the internet.
You're breaking up, Audra. Go, go ahead.
So I think that, you know, there's just so much uncertainty that, um, trying to fundamentally change everything going into FY21 would be as big a mistake as, you know, anything else that we could do. So I would really like to have you all strongly consider sort of you know, anything else that we could do. So I would really like to have you all strongly consider sort of, you know, like a, we can make, we can certainly make changes in the way that we do every year when it gets to a select board review, but I don't think like fundamental changes are really a good idea at this point.
I would have to solidly, uh, support that argument, Audra, because in a situation which we, anybody's been in, in, in the world of managing any kind of budget and you don't exactly know, uh, with, with any amount of definition what tomorrow may bring, you establish a budget with, but you establish contingency plans of what you can possibly affect going downstream. Should the situation go further south than, uh, than you might even anticipate? Um, I don't think anybody can preach at this point, uh, where the economy and the, the businesses and the whole town may be going in three or four months. Uh, the budget is just that. It's a budget. Uh, but we should have the ability to identify, um, areas where we can affect if need be. Um, that's just, that's just practical financial planning.
But do we want to table? Do we want to table this? Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think everything I'm hearing.
Make a decision now, hopefully having more information.
We're tabling this. We're kind of going off, branching off into other areas of, uh, discussion of the budget development. And that's going to evolve, uh, uh, as we go in the next week or two, actually. Audra.
I would really appreciate it if you all just set a date to have like a preliminary discussion as a select board about the budget. Um, I just think it would send a strong message that you're trying to, you know, you're trying to move forward. We're trying to plan for, you know, getting operations sort of back to where they normally are.
What are we doing?
Cared for when we, we get to that point. And I think that's really important.
I start forgetting things too. Once I've looked at it and then I let too much time pass and then we forget all the things that we were.
I forget the things I want to yell about. Uh, Audra, what do you, we, we have two meetings near term. I agree with that. There's nothing wrong with discussing where we're at and setting a date for that in terms of the budget, but should it be as soon as April 21st or is it May 5th?
What's today?
Your way. What?
What's today? The 7th?
Uh, 7th, isn't, I'm sorry. Thank you, Allison.
The 21st be too early.
I didn't say it was. I was asking a question.
I like the 21st itself.
I have a question. When would we have needed to have done it if we were certainly going ahead on June 14th?
On June?
You would be, you would be fine if, um, you reviewed it in April.
Or May, or May. We, we, we can do the addendum to the town report, yeah, with the 7th. So we could have, all we need to have is that approved addendum done, printed seven days before June 14th. So that would be June 7th backing up printing, backing up this. You're into probably the latest middle of May to approve it. If you took that line, if you took that option. But I have no problem putting, we put it on the 21st and discuss it again and see where we're at.
Hold on, is that a select board meeting?
I believe it. Today's, today's the 7th. The next one will be the 21st, right?
So to me, I would think we would do like a workshop, date type of thing first and then decide after that if it's ready for a select board agenda and then hopefully approve it at, whenever we put it on the actual meeting agenda. But that's just my.
No, I, I'm not, I'm, I don't mind workshops. Um, I would suggest maybe we, 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 we wait till the 21st to schedule a workshop. We could do it the following week. And then we could, if we want to bring it to a select board meeting, we bring it on May 7th, you said, Allison, was the next one.
Why don't we just schedule a workshop right now and just do it sometime next week?
What do we, you can, that's fine. That's fine.
I don't, I don't know. I just don't.
That's fine. I guess. Allison, because I think the, uh, the, uh, I'm suspecting the budget committee is going to have one more meeting on the, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's this week or next week. I was just trying to. That's all I'm saying. I, I, I don't, I don't think it's smart to have a workshop in the select. That's not smart. It's perfectly doable just to have a discussion because it may go more than one time, like you said. But I think we could, uh, I think we should wait until the last meeting of the budget committee to schedule that.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe we'll think of something, maybe we'll have useful input that will become part of the budget.
Taylor?
Really discussions.
Um, I guess my suggestion is that we, we set the budget, we set up the budget discussion for a select board meeting on May 5th, and then we, um, find the time prior to then to have a workshop. That way it's set and it gives us time to workshop, gives us time to have a meeting. Um, Janice wants to say.
I just wanted to tell you that you have technically to like at least make 10.
Thank you.
For the town reports.
Okay.
Thank you. Give you a little bit of time.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Taylor.
That wouldn't make it late.
Yeah, I, I think the 21st, we're setting a workshop date in May 7th for tentative date for discussing the budget, approving the budget.
May, May 21st.
That kind of gives us a couple of meetings to talk about, the workshop to talk about it, to analyze it, to discuss amongst ourselves. We're not approving anything in a workshop. We'll have a chance to, you know, figure out the half dozen or dozen nuts we want to crack in the May 7th select board meeting if we go ahead with that meeting on approving the budget. That makes sense.
The workshop. Did we decide on that?
Uh, we would have decided that. I heard Taylor say you decided that on the 21st.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think.
I look to 21st.
It kind of makes sense, guys, but remember, we, 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 I did remember the budget committee is not done yet. Um, and I, I'm hoping it'll be done a week from Thursday. I think that thinking about, Audra, is that correct? Have we heard of what date they're going to meet next or are they going to meet the budget committee?
Discussing it with, I mean, a lot, they often take, take suggestions from us on when to meet next. And I think they were talking about not this Thursday, but next Thursday.
That's the 16th.
16. Well, that kind of played to me, Allison, about the 16th, the 21st will uh, workshop and then we'll have the tentatively set, May 5th, 7th, you said, May 7th for the select board. That's what I thought it was, but Allison, I only get even, Allison.
I did not say, I did not, no, no, that was.
You made that up in your head, Bob.
I'm hearing a lot of things back here. Let me tell you. Okay. Does that make, does that make sense to you all? Mark, yeah? Jenna?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Uh, we'll set it, we'll set the 21st, we'll set a workshop and on May, the first select board meeting is May, we will schedule tentatively for the select board approval. I'm so confused. Um, okay, good. That's great. Um, the next item on the agenda was the, well, the, we do have the general fund and snowball financials in our packet. Um, I don't know if you have any questions on them. I did look at them and, uh, Jody, thank you very much for the recent, um, update today on the snowball, which we knew it would be looking at. It's not complete yet in terms of revenue or expenses, which is typical. But, um, Jody's suggesting the snowball will probably be about what we thought in the range of 20, 25K, uh, in the red under budget. Or I should say over budget, uh, by June 30th. Are there any other questions on the financials that you have? Mark?
Uh, Jody, does that, what I'm looking at right now is we're, what is it, 36? 36, but they're still, they're still expecting the kind of revenue that we saw in the previous, uh, previous year in, in, uh, June.
Jody, Jody has a separate email, Mark, just came out only a few hours ago, that takes that into, suggesting that that number, 36, will be around 20 or 25.
Okay. I, I hadn't seen that yet.
I wouldn't doubt it. Is that correct, Jody?
That's correct. Um, we're still anticipating about 40,000 in revenue to come in. That's going to be ski club, uh, country, which actually, did you, you guys just voted on waiving those, those, um, rental fees? And Beth, that, was that part of your list or is that something different if you're still here, Beth?
And she's gone.
No, she's still.
I'm here. I'm here.
She's there. Hi, Beth.
Hi, I'm here. Um, so, yeah, I didn't include, include that because I didn't know how the board was going to vote tonight. So that's 4,000 that won't be coming in.
That was including your revenue?
Yeah, they, their monthly, they anticipated revenue for the, until June.
I see.
The end of June.
I see.
Okay, so we'll take that out. Uh, so we'll be, we'll be four more thousand dollars possibly.
Close to 30, close to 30. I guess I don't quite understand why we're taking that as revenue to the snowball. It, it, those, there's a summer months to not selling ski equipment, are they?
Well, the budget is until the end of June.
I get that, but we split the year between Parks and Rec and the snowball based on those seasons.
Their lease lives in the snowball budget.
Okay. That's interesting. I didn't know that.
All, all lodge, all lodge rentals are also in the snowball budget.
I didn't know that.
Yep.
Oh. Well, that's good to know. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, sure.
You're very, well, but it is, it is. Uh, we, we're looking at the 20, 30K, um, um, uh, over budget at this point in time. That's really weird as Mark, um, to all of us. And I mean, no surprise. I mean, I think Jody, when she did her project action, when we were looking at the snowball open or not, we, we kind of analyzed if we had shut it down at that time period in March before this happened. It would have been, I think, Jody, you said about 20K, uh, on, uh, over budget anyway. That's what we were talking. So we're in the same order of magnitude. I just hope we're not shifting further south. That's all. We all do, right, Beth? She's not, smile, will you? Um, it's all money. Okay. Uh, any other questions on the finances of the snowball? Okay. Um, the, the many items are really more, um, um, discussions about future select board meetings and, um, I'm interested in any input. We, the items were contemplated for April 21st were the approval of the Windjammer. Um, at some point in time, we have to look at those. I don't believe there are any delayed public hearings anymore. Audra, I think we've covered them all right now. And the only thing left to do is to prove the warrant language for the stuff we've already approved. Um, and, um, the other, other actions that are also pending would be, and we've discussed, we're a presentation on the inland moorings working group. Um, and, and we do have to address the, uh, uh, looking at the draft of the FY19 audit report. I guess, um, we probably do at some point in time need to proceed with, assuming there's going to be a summer for the Windjammer captains. And that probably needs to be on a near-term agenda because there's, they're going to need to know what they need to pay, assuming. Um, again, there's no, I'm not aware of any delayed public hearings anymore. Two, we do need to look at drafting the FY19 audit report. I'm just looking at the draft of it and adjudicating on it. That could be a workshop, depending on how you all feel about reviewing an audit report. It can be heavy, it can be easy. The presentation on the inland working, marketing, working in the work group, Taylor, I get extra motions about how fast or to, given the current situation.
Yeah, I, well, I guess for me, the, it just depends on how, how light or heavy the agenda is. I don't think there's any reason to, to delay it unless there's a, a night which is a heavy agenda, you know, and I may have to move it back. I will say, um, I've been keeping our group very updated. Um, they have been patient and, um, they put a significant amount of work in over more than a year now. Uh, um, quite a bit of times. So I think it would be helpful to have that discussion as early in the season as possible. Um, granted, obviously we're in exceptional times and, um, other things need to take priority. Um, so, you know, I'll leave it to, to, I, I guess.
I mean, my good feeling is the 21st is, I'm, Audra, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, some of the side, the side country activity, uh, the Windjammer agreement and even the discussion on the inland moorings working group, that probably could be had on the 21st if we want to do that. I don't think it's going to be a heavy agenda. I, 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 my gut feels, so we could, we'll consider that, Taylor, and if nobody disagrees with that, and Mark, I know you had your hand up a minute ago, but, um, and I, I would also like to suggest that, um, perhaps look at perhaps a workshop for the audit report unless you feel comfortable doing it in a select board meeting. I need your input on that. I, I have no problem doing it in a select board meeting, but I'm not sure how much.
What's the question, Bob?
The, the draft FY19 audit report is ready and we have to approve that. Um, and in past years, we have done workshops, but, but there are more heady things going on there. Um, and, um, I don't think there are.
This.
Audra, breaking up.
Yeah.
Audrey, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would say that if, of any year where, um, an, an approval of the audit report could just be maybe a question with the auditor as opposed to a full-on workshop, this would be the year. You know, there were, there were very few significant issues or find, you know, no real findings this year. So I think that, um, it would be a good year if you want to forego doing a, a workshop just to discuss the audit. This would be the year to do.
All right, Audra, schedule lies in the audit. What, what would they prefer for approval? Is it ASAP? Uh, is the 21st kind of work or if it went to the May 5th, would that be a problem? Just for flexibility reasons.
We're not, we're not getting a lot of pressure from them about approving, you know, we were the ones putting pressure on them to give us a draft of the audit, not the other way around. Wouldn't you say that's the case, Jody?
Saying yes.
Yes, very much so.
Before I make the next comment, Mark, you had your hand up for an hour.
Um, and I forgot what, I was going to say, first off, um, the island moorings group, uh, I went through the report. I thought that they've done an excellent job. I don't think it's a long discussion. I, I like the recommendations. Um,
Go ahead, Mark.
And, uh, in terms of, um, the audit, I think we can do it in a meeting. I, I, you know, I think it should go well, uh, based on what Audra and Jody have said. The other thing I wanted to ask or remind you, we're talking about financials. Uh, I did want to just get a sense from Audra and Jody whether they're seeing impact from everything that's happened on town revenue, town budgets, town, anything, if they have a feel yet for it.
Um, I was just going through, um, past FY19 and going sort of line by line with expenditures and revenues. Um, we're, we're pretty much tracking at this point through March, um, where we should be. Um, the only other thing I can check, which I, I didn't have time tonight, but I certainly can do that for you guys, is, uh, tax collection. Um, we, we had a literally a million dollar day today for taxes. So, um, all of banks, we, we have over half of our property taxes are escrowed. So the banks are sending the money in. Um, and people are appreciating the, um, the wave of interest until July. So, um, I can certainly get that together for you guys tomorrow to see where we stand from last year to this year with collection.
Okay.
And I guess clearly, another, another thing, um, you know, we all knew that revenue sharing is going to take a hit for the final quarter of this year and for, um, probably at least the first quarter of next year. Um, but when we prepared the budget last year, we didn't know what the legislature was going to do with revenue sharing. So we budgeted based on the premise that it was going to be much like it was in prior years. So it's not like we're counting on that revenue. So it's not going to, my point is that any dip in sales tax revenue on state level is not going to impact our budget locally for this year at all.
That's good.
All right, cool. Um, Taylor?
Um, yeah, I just asked a quick question off of what Mark was, um, talking about. Now that, I guess it's for Audra and Jody. Now that, um, there has been a federal emergency, um, declared in the state of Maine, I'm curious if there are, you know, unusual or additional expenditures that we can tie directly to the COVID-19 emergency, if we are in a position to be reimbursed through the federal government for those.
Yeah, so just, um, I believe it was Fri-, uh, Monday or Friday, um, we were declared, it, it was a declared disaster zone. We are eligible for FEMA reimbursement for everything associated with, uh, the pandemic.
I mean, fundamentally, it's obvious that our, when Jody comes up with a number of what we might not be collecting in taxes, it will affect cash flow more than anything. I don't see, I honestly don't see, and Jody, you're more expert, a tremendous financial hit over a couple of months. Um, um, due to the current situation. Next year, we'll see. And I think the biggest hit next year will be, to Audra's point, we could have a stake as financially in trouble if it's not bailed out because of the loss of sales tax, if, if in fact the summer could be what it might be, but we won't know that for a while. But to, to close on these issues of, of, uh, we will look to put, uh, Windjammer. Presentation in the moorings group and uh audit report review, most likely on the next agenda, which would be April twenty first. I I think we can probably carry that load, plus all this stuff. Any other comments? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn any discussion. Taylor? Well, Allison? Mark?
Hi.
And Jenna?
Hi.
Bob, I also, five eyes, good job. And that was, that was almost perfect.